All right, I am going to call to order the June 9th Common Council meeting at 7:40. First thing up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to our republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, both of us.
Alder Radifrada. Alder Clouter. Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Crowsey.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is spoken appearances for non-agenda items or new appointments. I don't have anyone here that wants to speak on a non-agenda item unless Chief does, which I don't think he does. All right, we do have a mayor proclamation though, and I guess we're gonna take a photo. All right, I'll come up front. And we do have six out of the eight people here today, so if there's a way to kind of stagger ourselves, maybe we could do a group photo, I think. When I'm done reading, we can wait until I'm done reading, but I don't know how that's gonna work, but we'll figure it out. All right, so today we are recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer month. Whereas Pittsburgh is dedicated to ensuring that LGBTQ plus community and its allies have a safe and inclusive environment to celebrate diverse sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas June 2020 is the 50th anniversary of Pride Month. And whereas LGBTQ plus month recognizes that Pittsburgh and the global lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community have made great strides in the recent years towards full equality. And whereas LGBTQ plus Pride Month raises awareness about Pittsburgh's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community and their contributions to Pittsburgh's unique and diverse tapestry in a positive and productive manner. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, queer, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as LGBTQ plus pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer pride, and LGBTQ plus social movements. And whereas flying the rainbow flag at City Hall throughout the month of June further symbolizes the city's celebration of diversity and support of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, changed gender, and queer community. Now therefore bear it resolved that I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, issue this proclamation and hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the City of Pittsburgh. Invite everyone to reflect in ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and further recognize Pride Month by flying the rainbow flag at City Hall during the month of June. Reclaim this ninth day of June 2020. And for those who don't know, this year for the first time, we did, we are currently through the whole month flying the pride flag outside City Hall, so that's something that we had a short ceremony on the first in the morning and were able to do that. Hopefully next year we can invite lots of people and don't have to worry about social distancing, but something that I was very happy that we were able to do. And this is just another piece of that, so if there's a way for all of us to kind of, I don't know, stagger, kind of somewhere or other to take a photo, maybe, you know, if you guys are there and some of us stand in front of you, that might be the best. If you guys maybe stand or something so people can see you all.
We got a really high tech. We have a good high tech game. That was close. It's all right, we'll put it in the budget.
I gotta note how awkward this is.
They'll have to Photoshop us in somehow.
These include then my statements on the record.
And really for this and any other proclamation, if anyone ever wants a copy, Tracy can get one of those printed off for you and we can get that to you. So anything in the future too, not just this one, just let Tracy or myself know. All right, next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All right, second by Joe, thank you. And now is there anything that people want to pull out of the consent agenda before we approve it?
Yes, I, I'm sorry.
Gabrielle, sure.
I'd like to pull R 118-20 off for discussion or for, yeah.
Oh, number six?
Number six, yes.
Okay. All right, anything else to pull off? All right, then all in favor of approving everything but number six, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, those are approved. Now we need a resolution for number six for R 118-20. So we can make a motion so we can discuss.
Motion to approve R 118-20.
All right, a second. And so is there someone that you want, yeah Gabrielle?
Yeah, so I, in general, I'm, this is a really interesting resolution. I think it deserves a lot of discussion because I think voting issues for the city are really complicated in this time of the pandemic and need a lot of attention, as you've all heard me speak about before. My concern about this referral is that pushing it direct to the next common council means we'll have a discussion at the council followed immediately by a vote and there's not going to be an opportunity for that discussion to get public airing and an opportunity for constituents to get back to us about what they think about it. So my question would be, I have a proposal that perhaps we refer it to a special committee of the whole meeting next week so that we can have an in-depth discussion about it because I, I think that amendments are potentially merited and I want to dig into it a little bit more. I don't know if that's something that we can do, but I wanted to ask the question and see what the other council members thought about having a more in-depth discussion separately from the next council meeting.
I guess the biggest issue was trying to call a special meeting is just working around other meetings because I know there's a lot of other meetings that are happening and on Tuesday night is Plan Commission, for example, starts at 6:30. But I don't know if other people have any thoughts on.
Can I just add a little something? The reason that it was put on the agenda for June 23rd for approval is we're not having that first meeting in July and if it is approved, it needs to be approved 30 days prior to the election.
Yeah, so we have to approve it in two weeks, so it's just a question of, it sounds like you want to have a discussion and then another discussion a week later essentially.
That, that's my, I would like to have a public discussion where we talk about potential amendments and changes followed by a period of time when we can touch base with our constituents and hear any sort of community feedback based on that final result, because I do understand that there's that time constraint and normally I would just say we move forward and maybe we push the vote if we need to, but just given the time constraints and also what I believe is the importance of this issue, I propose that we should maybe have some time for discussion before the council meeting.
Other thoughts at all? Yeah, Julie?
The other thing when I saw this, it was, we are talking about increasing because my concern is to have, you know, only one polling station versus two or three polling stations. So it's gonna be a cost associated with that, so I would like to send this also to the finance committee meeting to discuss how much it's gonna cost to, you know, if we need to.
We can add that as a referral to finance, yeah. Yeah, that's easy enough. That's an easy thing we can do.
And then to have, you know, when you go to referral for finance, to have the numbers that we can discuss how much it's gonna cost, you know, if we, if we have a second location or, you know what I mean, to have one in the east and one in the west, you know what I mean, to, to avoid the problem now that we have, you know, like to have one in a specific area of the city. We are trying to look for a centralized location that fit all the requirement to have a polling station, but, so I am concerned that some, some citizens for part of the city, they are not gonna be allowed to.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. Other comments at all?
Yeah, I mean, I'm restating something from previous meetings, but, you know, it's definitely an access issue when you think about, you know, where one of them is located. And, you know, particularly in my district, there's a lot of residents that lack transfer, reliable transportation, so I just want to reiterate that point.
I guess kind of the outstanding issue is I don't know if people are available next week to meet or not. So, I don't know.
Why? Because maybe we can ask if we can meet.
Well, yeah, I mean, you will need to let me know if they can.
I don't have any problem to meet next week if we have to.
Yep, I'll make time for it.
I make time.
I'm available.
Joe's available. Dorothy, are you?
Probably available.
All right, Sarah, are you free?
Yep.
Shannon, no. Tom? No, Randy? Okay, so it sounds like we would have quorum, I think I can, depends on the time, I guess. Yeah, please, sir.
If this were to be referred to the next finance meeting, would that be the 22nd? I'm sorry, I'm not completely familiar, or the 23rd, right? It'd be right before the council meeting? So could that serve as the public forum where the public could be encouraged to come into that finance meeting to voice their opinions?
Or they can come into the council meeting.
They could come into the, yeah. So then I guess, yes, I guess for clarification, would it just be for the council to discuss this further? Is that the intent? Okay.
Pat?
Yeah, what day are you looking at? I'm sorry.
I have no idea. Probably Tuesday before Plan Commission, I guess, or I don't know what's on Wednesday.
I'm not available, but we can, I can check with other staff.
Uh, so I'm not really sure. Oh, sorry, Dorothy, go ahead.
One of the things that we really need to do is have an in-depth discussion about polling places in general and what the future might be. I know we've always had a problem for District One in that one side or the other always has to figure out how to get across the highway, which is actually both easier and harder now. But I think, and maybe it'll be part of redistricting work that we do in about another year or so. So, but I would like to have more of a discussion, for sure, even about August and November. Because if we do just one polling place, now we're not kind of beefing ourselves up for the November election, which is kind of a spooky thing for me also.
Tom, you had your hand raised?
We could not have a meeting or discussion on this. Does it have to be next week or can be the following week?
Well, that'd be the council meeting. They're asking for a discussion before the council meeting.
Before the council meeting?
Now, we do have a special meeting on the 30th. Could we discuss it on the 23rd and then vote on the 30th? I know that it's, we have had a limited agenda, but is that a possibility? Because we already need to have that special meeting on the 30th.
Yeah, we could put that on the agenda for the 30th.
Okay, so the 30th, so you should have gotten emails that we need to do a special meeting for, you guys have a lot of TIDS.
Yeah, there's a TID amendment for TID 13 in Uptown, so there'll be a special meeting of Joint Review Board, Council, and I believe Finance that night.
So, did you already send the email?
Yep, there's been emails, there's been meeting reminders.
I was looking at the five o'clock.
I guess I thought everyone got it.
Yeah, everyone should have got it. It starts at.
Last week.
Yep.
Last week?
Yeah.
On the 30th, I didn't get that. What time does it start?
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it either.
I didn't get it either.
All right, maybe we'll check into that and.
And Bicycle Committee is scheduled for 7:30 PM. So I guess if something were to be scheduled during that time, I don't know how that works, but about like moving bicycle committee or.
Yeah, we'd have to move the Bicycle Committee meeting that night.
So, oh my god.
All right, so surprised there is, we need to do a special meeting on June 30th?
When? June 30th?
June 30th, yeah. So, so one option is to essentially have this as a discussion item in two weeks like normal, but then we won't vote on it. We'll wait to vote then the next week and we can have, you know, further discussion the week after. Yeah, do you have a question, Gabrielle?
Yeah, my question is, so that, it's gonna be a special council meeting, so there's actually gonna be voting at the meeting. Okay.
Yeah.
And I would be, my question would be to Tracy then, if, if that, like, I feel like the, the thing too is that the more time, the better because we need to notice everybody if things are changing. So that's the other reason why I thought that this requires like a, like a special case super urgency is because we need to notice everybody if things are changing. So do you think that extra week is gonna be a, a problem?
It shouldn't be a problem as far as being able to approve it in time if we are gonna combine polling locations.
So I guess the question would be, is that all right if we discuss it in two weeks and then we'll just postpone the vote until that week after? Because we have that special meeting, so.
That, that seems like a fine solution to me.
Okay, so I guess if I can just ask the two people who made the motion, second, we had two friendlies, I would call it, is one to essentially, we'll talk, we'll discuss it in two weeks like normal and then we'll just postpone the vote, which we can do. And then to also refer it to Finance Committee. Yep, so I mean, so I mean, you're okay with that? And you're okay with?
I guess I just have a point of order question.
Yeah.
Does this mean that we don't vote on what I said and I just postpone the vote at the next meeting?
No, we'll still vote on it because we added the Finance Committee referral to it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We'll still approve that we're referring it out.
Okay.
Yep, and we just kind of, and we know that, you know, we'll discuss it in two weeks, but we'll just postpone the vote for another week.
Got it.
And that'll also get sent to Finance Committee that in two weeks as well. Yeah, Julia?
What time is that meeting? The June 30th?
I don't, do you need to have it, Pat?
There's actually going to be four different meetings that night, starting at 4:00 PM will be Joint Review Board. Mike Zimmerman, I just.
But council doesn't have to go to Joint Review Board?
No, 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 no. Council meeting will be probably at seven, seven, Mike Zimmerman's gonna be sending out the schedule. I just texted him.
Probably tomorrow, we'll get that information out to you.
Okay, because it's gonna be better because, you know.
Yep, we'll get that information out. I thought it went to everyone.
No, we didn't have.
So will staff postpone like other meetings that conflict?
Yeah, we'll work out the conflicts with other meetings, like bike committee. Yep. Yeah. All right, so the motion is to, you know, still refer this out and adding the Finance Committee as another committee. And then we know in two weeks we won't vote on it, we'll postpone it, we'll have that special meeting on the 30th as well, so we can go ahead and vote. All in favor of that, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is also approved. Then, let's see, there's a lot on the consent agenda. All right, Mr. Ray's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a lot to report to this evening. As you know, we have many different things going on in regards to COVID and some of the stuffs we're trying to do with economic development, so I'm going to start with that. If I could just get to my notes here quickly. First of all, the Pittsburgh Biz Boost Loan Program, the applications are due Friday, June 12th at 4:30 PM. This is available to Pittsburgh small businesses with 1 to 25 employees. The intent of this low program, loan program is to assist with costs associated with relaunching business operations with the necessary health and safety protocols detailed in the Forward Dane reopening plan. The details are, this is a 30-month loan program. It provides six months of no payments, no interest, followed by 24 equal monthly payments beginning in January of 2021 with 1% interest annually. As I noted, the deadline for this application is June 12th at 4:30 PM. Then the application for the temporary change of premise to allow for expanded outdoor seating will still be accepted. Our Pittsburgh restaurants and bars have been especially hit hard by COVID-19 health and economic crisis in order to accelerate the recovery while following the Dane County Public Health requirements during the reopening phases of Forward Dane. The City of Pittsburgh is making available a temporary expanded outdoor premise application process to accommodate seating modifications needing for spacing and social distancing. Next is We're In, We're All In Small Business Grant Application Cycle is open June 15th to the 21st. The We're In All In Small Business Grant Program is designed to help small businesses get back on their feet as they, as they reemerge from the COVID-19 pandemic and safer at home, while also encouraging adoption of best practices to keep employees, customers, and communities safe. Funded by the Federal Cares Act and We're All In Small Business Grant, we will provide $2,500 to $30,000, Wisconsin Small Business, I'm sorry, $2,500 to $30,000 small businesses to assist with cost of business interruption or for health and safety improvements. Wages and salaries, rent, mortgages, and, and interest qualify. The online grant application is accessible for one week from 8:00 AM Monday, June 15th to 11:59 PM Sunday, June 21st. Applications for those programs can be found on our city website or just calling staff at City Hall. They can call myself, Patrick Marsh, the city administrator, Mike Zimmerman, or Joyce Frye in the Economic Development Department. Are there any questions on those economic development programs before I move forward?
Yes, can you tell us how many applicants do we have for the, for the, the first one, the.
The loan program?
Yeah, the loan program.
I don't know at this point in time how many applications we have. I do know that we've had a premise extension, applications that were both presented to public safety this evening and will be approved by this body here later tonight. I can get you that information though tomorrow.
Okay.
On the loan programs.
Yeah, to have an idea if people are.
Okay.
Yeah, what else?
All right, thank you. Just a few updates on some of the, the major projects out there. Just so you know what's going on in, in terms of construction. The MM Lacy Intersection and Signalization Improvements. The Bit Award was scheduled for June 9th, which was today. Construction was, is to be completed by August 15th. Signalization will be completed by the Citizen, City of Madison prior to the grade school opening over in Terravessa, so that new signal will go in here shortly. On Fish Hatchery Road, concrete pavement on northbound, north of Greenway Cross is nearing completion. Work will begin on pavement south of Greenway beginning next week. Curbin Gutter is being installed south of Greenway Cross. Utilities are being completed south of Post Road. Post Road is looking to be closed and Greenway opened up the beginning of July. Crescent Crossing, which is the new subdivision at Seminole and Lacy, is, road grading is near complete and they're starting utility work this week. Fahy Glen off of East Cheryl Parkway near Promega, they're completing restoration work. They planted trees today. Final paving, which is the, the top two inches of surface of the pavement, will occur within the next two weeks. I actually drove the road today to check it out and it's, it's a nice addition to the city and it should help traffic flow between the Promega workers that are coming in either Lacy or East Cheryl. Commerce Park Drive over by the new Promega building and the Subzero Campus. They're finishing stormwater installation. They will be working on that project through the summer with a September completion date. Let's see here. Like, a project that has been of interest to this council is the Lake Barney Stormwater Study. The first update meeting yesterday with the city consultant was on board. Estimates provided for private drawdown. The wetland identification is a critical path forward to the solution. The Village of Oregon is still proceeding with downstream improvements. Property owners impacted by potential solutions are fully informed of the activity and are participating in the developing solutions, so we're moving forward with that project. The other major project that we'll be working on in terms of engineering this year is the design of Sain Road from Lacy down to.
McCoy?
McCoy. Too many mix in, in Pittsburgh. So to McCoy, that'll be designed this year and with, construction will take place in 2021. So, wanted to get you up to speed on all the projects because we've been getting a lot of calls, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, seen none. We can move on to commission and committee reports. First up is Plan Commission. Anything, Tom?
And we meet next week on the 16th.
All right, Public Works, Sarah?
Pat stole my thunder with all the updates. We met Monday, 6/1, approve the traffic signalization efforts. That'll be discussed later on. And our next meeting is 6:15.
All right, what about Parks Commission?
Parks Commission, we met Thursday, 6/4. We approved the Terravessa South Playground and the Veterans Memorial Park that we'll see later. The McKee Changing Rooms are being built and moving along well, that there were some photos provided of that. And Scott Endel, the Director of Parks, is continuing to review the COVID phases and will keep everyone up to date. If anything changes, our next meeting is August 6th.
All right, Library Board, Randy?
Nothing to report, but we are meeting first time since COVID, 17th, next week. Thank you.
Sounds good. Commission on Asian Well, Dorothy?
The June meeting was canceled again. We are planning on doing a July meeting, otherwise Department is keeping on, keeping on doing the good work they do.
All right, RCC?
Yeah, the Research Conservation Commission is planning to meet next week, June 15th at 6:30 PM. And Phil Groupie, the Sustainability Specialist, is planning another Green E newsletter shortly and you can sign up for that on the city's website.
All right, what about Transportation and Transit?
The next meeting is looking, it's, we're shaping up to be scheduled June, July 9th, but that's still TBD.
All right, Seda, Julia?
We are meeting next, on June 25th.
All right, sounds good. Agribusiness, Randy?
Nothing to report, but we're hoping to have a meeting soon.
All right, excellent. EMS?
Nothing to report. We have a meeting next week.
All right, Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Earlier comments, might have a meeting on the 30th, but that depends on what we're gonna do with the council.
All right, thank you. Tree Advisory?
We're meeting in September and I'm also, we've been getting some updates from city staff about what's been going on with the trees in, in town and very charming updates, and so I'm actually gonna put some on my blog with some photos because I think it's really interesting insight into how the city staff does their work, so I'll, that's upcoming.
All right, great. Landmarks Preservation, Shannon?
No report.
All right, Census Complete Committee, Dorothy?
We're planning on meeting on the 16th at 10 o'clock.
All right, what about Housing Advisory?
We had a meeting on that last night.
We had a meeting on that last night. Got a lot of work done. First, we had a presentation by Kurt Poulsen on the City of Middleton affordable housing initiatives. That is available online, of course. We also reviewed some of our action items, some of the good stuff that has been done, things we're still looking forward to. We got the Housing Committee created. We got authorizing Dane County Housing Authority. We amended the comprehensive plan, though that will get further amendments. We've been creating some subcommittees. One of the big questions that they have is how do other council members want to be involved in affordable housing? Some of the subcommittees might have opportunities for people to participate. So they're going to want to kind of survey the various council members with various options of ways that people might want to help participate in those.
All right. What about Healthy Neighbors?
We are meeting on.
Next week, June 17.
All right. Great. Before we go to finance, if no one has an objection, I'd like to actually skip down to unfinished business and do Resolution 10A, Resolution R10320, which is adopting a memorandum of understanding between Fitchbrook Fire and the Wisconsin DNR, because Chief Paul Vermaeker is here, and I'm sure he has better things to do than sit through a bunch of stuff. So if no one has an objective, I'd like to, objective, I'd like objection, I'd like to have someone make a resolution for that. Anyone want to do?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution R11220, authorizing award of the contract for Lacy Road MM intersection. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
10A.
Sorry, sorry. 10A. I know, I apologize. Resolution R10320, adopting a memorandum of understanding between Fitchbrook Fire Department and Wisconsin DNR.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Shannon. All right. Joe, you want to tell us what this is?
Yeah, just want to provide a little bit of an overview. In the urban suburban areas where the DNR does not provide their own fire protection, they set up memorandum of understanding with those fire departments. And if there were to be an emergency, a fire emergency on the property, we would be reimbursed for our efforts, and that's identified in the memorandum of understanding. In addition to that, there are grant funds that are typically available every year, but you have to be a member department, somebody who has an active MOU signed in order to participate. And those, those applications are due July 1st. We're well ahead of it. I don't know that we have anything to submit for the grant this year, but we absolutely have to get this signed and approved in order to be up to date.
So we've been doing this, you just need to update?
Yeah, as far back as 2002, I'm not exactly sure on the, it's well before my time.
All right. Questions at all for Chief Paul Vermaeker? Seeing none?
Actually, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, I'm just curious about the DNR's practices in terms of prairie restoration? Like, do they, do they do regular burns? And have you ever had to jump in on a fire that has happened as a result of that? Like, what's the history of your involvement in any of that?
So typically, what we respond to is the emergency, is those fires that get away. Prairie restoration is generally a controlled burn. They, they either do that themselves or they hire a company to come in. We will abide by DNR rules when it comes to the, the different specifications for burning safely. But even during this burn ban, we allowed prairie restoration because they typically respond in with their own firefighting unit, they're all trained in it, and they carry their own insurance, bonding and insurance. So if something goes wrong, they are responsible for it. So yes, we have only had to respond to those situations when they got out of hand, and I can't think of a single situation where prairie restoration got out of hand.
That's great. Thanks.
All right. Anything else? All right. Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Now back to finance. Julia?
Okay. So, so on Finance Committee, we approve bills, the detailed review of all check issued, check number 120879-120896, dated May 16th to May 31st, 2020, totaling 91,982.86. Also, we review the detail, all of the, all of the ACH payment dated May 2020, totaling And then we discuss, Misty gave us a presentation about the COVID-19 Finance Report, Impact Report, and also Treasure Report from March and April. And then I need a motion to approve Resolution R-107-20, adopting the 2021 Annual City Budget Schedule with.
Let's see the motion first.
The motion, okay, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Shannon? And then you said you have some things you need to change, Julia?
Yeah. Finance, we made a friendly amendment with the, yeah. So Misty, in the original, you see in the package, she, she thought that maybe we can do all the meetings in one night. But Finance Committee, we decided that we should have some flexibility in case something happened, and we want to have a second night to have a meeting with the heads of the department, so we add back the date in case that we need it.
So similar to last night with CIP, just having two days available in case one gets kind of long?
Yeah.
Because like, Public Works got pretty long.
Yeah.
Okay. So are you making a friendly?
Yeah, so, so the, the friendly resolution is that we are going to add back, I think it's September 30th, on the table, on the schedule.
All right. Who did you have as the second? Tracy, was it Randy or Gabrielle? Okay. Are you okay with that, too?
Yep.
Friendly? All right. Any other questions on the schedule at all? All right. Seeing none. All in favor of adopting the city budget schedule with the additional day for staff presentations, can say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right. That is approved. Anything else for Finance?
Well, we have something coming later.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Personnel, Dorothy?
Nothing new.
All right. Public Safety, Sarah?
We received two applicants who would like to have the expanded outdoor seating. I'd like, so I don't know, I guess, if there's a resolution for these. Do I make a resolution? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion then to have Kelly Fresh, otherwise known as Tapatio, is approved for outdoor seating. They said that they plan on putting up some tables.
Hold on, let's get a second first.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. What's going on?
Yeah, thank you. So they plan on putting up some tables out in front. They said that they without a doubt would have the required seating spaced. We did ask for them to submit their fencing plan to Tracy, and she would share that with department heads. So we approved it pending that fence plan that they'll submit.
And staff, a number of staff already looked at it as well for other issues and concerns, right?
Yep. Tracy was great to give feedback for that. They, they came in tonight and were there to answer questions, and we didn't have any.
See, did you guys approve this, then?
We did.
All right. Other questions on this one? Seeing none, then. All in favor of approving Kelly Fresh, or is it Tapatio's or Tapatios?
Tapatios.
Tapatios. All in favor of approving their outdoor seating, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right. That one's approved, and you got one more, it looks like?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Julio Madison, otherwise known as Mia and Julio, for the expanded outdoor seating.
Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by, we got DeShannon, I guess, that one. All right. What's happening on this one?
For this one, they do plan on putting it within the cell of lawn. It's another instance where they plan on emailing the fence plan to Tracy, and their patio is pretty popular. They were also here tonight to answer questions, and we approved within public safety.
So they actually have some outside seating, but they're expanding it?
They do. Yep.
All right. Questions on Mia and Julio's expanded seating? All right. Seeing none. All in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right. That one's approved. Anything else for Public Safety?
Nope.
All right. And we'll move on to Mayor's Report. First, as all of you know, the last, well, it's over a week now, has been an interesting time in the country with, in response to the events in Minnesota. I know that I've gotten a number of questions, and I'm sure that you've gotten questions from people. A lot of people have really latched on to the eight can't wait campaign, and it's eight policies that have been identified as being very beneficial to especially communities of color and African American community when, that police departments would have. And I emailed this to you, but good news is that in Fitchburg, we actually already have all eight of those policies. Two of them, Chief wants to improve the language even better, to make it even more clear, but all eight of those we do actually have already, which I didn't realize is, sounds like it's pretty rare, and there's not a lot of communities in the, at least in the area that are doing this. So we are ahead of the curve, which is great. We also have body cameras, which I think is another way to ensure that when something happens, that, you know, you don't have to take someone's word for it. We actually have the video of that. So I think that's another good way to, that we have to really have a lot of transparency and confidence in our police department. So just for anyone watching, so they know as well that that is something that we do have right now. Also, I mentioned the Read a Book for Kids program. First one that I did came out, I guess it was on Fact TV last week, but the link was on yesterday it came out, and we have a couple of people on council that volunteer to do that, a bunch of other staff people. Next week is going to be Misty Dodge, and I've been told that her book is about counting, which makes a lot of sense. So look forward to that one coming out. Also want to let you know that I got an email from the person in charge of the Milestone School. That's the high school, alternative high school that they were looking to have up on Index Road. And unfortunately, their lease kind of fell through with Dale, and so they are not going to be located in that location. They are for sure going to be online, and they are looking for a different location, preferably in Fitchburg. But I just want to let you know that is something that we had talked about in the past, and just, I don't know what, exactly what happened between the two of them, but fortunately their lease for the location they wanted to do didn't work out. So just want to let you know that. And then another thing that I want to let you know about is we talked about the solar park a lot, and we had wanted 500 kilowatts of energy from that. It was really popular, so we were able to get 250 kilowatts, but we did get notified from MG&E that one of the other users is not going to take as much as they originally wanted, and so we actually are going to be able to get 500 kilowatts like we originally wanted. And so that's great for Fitchburg. I believe that puts us over the 25% of energy from renewable resources, which I know is one of our goals. And so it gets us well on the way to our 100% bigger goal, I guess, but that's, that was good news for us that we were able to do that. And so they are going to be starting to build that sometime later this year. For those who didn't know or didn't hear, Bill Balky has been named the new Director of Public Works, and so that's a very exciting thing. It's great that we have someone that knows what's happening, because there is a lot going on, as you know, from some of the updates earlier today. You know, a year ago, he, we asked him if he would do that, and he said no for some personal issues and other things, but it was very exciting for me to know that he was interested in that. He did a great job a year ago interim. Staff is very excited to have him as well, and so we'll have to add another engineer to, I guess, kind of replace his old spot, but that's really good news for as much as we have going on right now, that we can have Bill take that over. And then also, earlier today, it sounds like there's at least going to be some, the library is pretty, is at least somewhat going to open on July 6th, it sounds like, is what Wendy is looking for. And so roughly around July 6th, they still have curbside pickup, though. You can schedule that. I know I'm picking up a book next Monday, so you can call them, and it has to be a book they have in stock. They can't get them in our library for other people, but that will be opening to the public in about a month here. And let's see, I think that's about all I have for now, so I can go to all the reports. We'll start with District 1, since they're both online. Joe, do you have a report?
So, you know, I echo your sentiments in mourning of the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery. This isn't new. This is something that's been happening for centuries. And right now, we're at a tipping point in our history. Not only are we having national calls for reform and complete transformation of policing as we know it, but we're also having those locally. I want to acknowledge the, you know, long time work that organizations in our community have done to call attention to this. And I urge that in this time, we really listen to the voices, particularly of black people who have experienced this trauma, have experienced this violence at the hands of the state. I, you know, I think we need to take a really close look, although, you know, I appreciate the feedback from our chief, really take a look at our budget priorities as we, you know, move into the coming year, and really strongly push towards addressing the root Often, police are asked to do things that are far outside of their purview and their expertise, that are often a symptom of root causes. Mental health, substance issues, you know, simple property issues that would better be addressed by folks who are experts or putting resources into those root causes. So, you know, I want to talk not only to the council, but to the City of Fitchburg as a whole, to read, to examine, to not take it personal, but to truly look at why the things that happen, happen, and how can we do things better, and to be brave, and to listen to the calls that we're seeing of people throughout our country and here in our community.
All right. Thank you. Dorothy?
Ditto, Joe. First of all, I had a little bit of an email back and forth with Sarah from HR today, talking about the policy that Chad had sent out, and what, what we ended up saying, or I said to her, is that when you look at that policy, you can feel in it that it is a top-down control document. How, how, how do we control these people? And I think we need to go and look at that from a much different perspective than the way it's written now. We need to include a lot more of the perspective of people who are potential victims of that top-down control policy. I'd like to see a good rewrite of it in time, and I would hope that as the document is looked at, that there will be a lot more voices included in the discussion. Other than that, I just been giving a lot of emotional energy to this whole thing over the last couple of weeks, watching a lot of what's been going on downtown Madison. And I'm hurting, too. These are people that I've been talking about on this council for years and kind of get brushed aside as though that's not, not the important part of the city to pay attention to. So I'm, I'm really glad that we're kind of being hammered down nowadays on paying attention to this because it's been needed for a long, 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 long time.
All right. Thank you. We'll mix things up and go to District 4 of today, so Randy, you don't have to go last. Got a report? Got a report?
There's a, there's a change. Let me start out with my, my usual of slow down. We have lots of construction, so when you're in those construction zones on McKee and Fish Edge, slow down. On a different note, and back to how we started this evening, as a gay man of the LGBTQ+ community, I would personally like to thank the mayor. You included me in on that, on the, some of that language of the proclamation. I really do appreciate that, reaching out. But in addition to thanking you, the staff, my colleagues here, and the city of Pittsburgh, many of you joined the day of the, of the flag raising. I never thought that this day would come, that, that I would see a municipality that I've been living here for 22 years, would recognize the LGBTQ+ community. I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome. Tom?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I want to start out by thanking again, they did it again, fire, police, ambulance. They drove around through my neighborhood in reference to the graduates that graduated, the high school kids. What a time not to walk down with a cap and gown. What a time not to celebrate with your, some of them still did with their families, but with other people. And what happened is, some of the kids, no, we didn't get them all, that's for sure, there's more to be done, more to, but some of the Verona kids were recognized in, in my neighborhood, and it was great. It was really nice to see. The second thing is, is for new members on this board, if you know the old city hall, it's where the statue is, on Fish Edge Road, just south of Irish Lane, there's a veterans' statue up on top of the hill. There's a flag there. If you didn't know, that's where the old town hall was. This building wasn't even built years ago, and that's where town hall was. That individual lost his life in Vietnam, he was a Marine, and that's been there for many years. What I tried to do, and what the city's done in the future here now, so you know, is we're trying to expand on the same area, it's called the Vet, we call it, for lack of term right now, it's the Gorman Veterans Park, but we call it the Veterans Park. And there's a number of veterans that have come together, and would like to see it done better. Maybe you've been to Nuglaris, Stoughton, Manona's got one, a veterans' park. There's one right there, two right outside of Stevens Point, and I saw 51 right there. If you look to the left, if you're headed to Madison, you'll see it. We're trying to expand the veterans' park up there, and just make it better for the veterans, and also recognize the veterans in the city of Pittsburgh. And with that being said, we took to the Parks Commission at their last meeting, the, I'm going to call it the plaque, and the plaque has all the, all the service, all this, every branch, every branch of service is on this plaque. And it will be, as you walk in, and you obviously, you'll see the Marines, Air, Army, Air Force, Navy, et cetera. And the Parks Commission passed it, and we did open up an account, there's an account opened up at the Oak Bank, and we did have a generous donation already to get this monument started. It's just the first piece, and it's not to be done, this may not be done for years to come, because we're not trying to do it all at once. So, we went to the Parks Commission, and I was glad to see they gave their blessing and took care, and passed it. And before I forget, Sarah, is there anything you want to add on that at all?
No, it was really well received at work.
Okay. And the last thing I just want to state, because I, I've heard a few comments tonight, what happened in Minnesota shouldn't have happened. That's not the way police train. We have a department here that's outstanding, and whatever you do, those in blue, don't label this all together. Don't label this all what you saw on TV, what the whole country and the nation has witnessed, because I can tell you, we're not all the same. We don't treat people the same. When you put a badge on, you respect not only the law, but you respect the people you serve. Just take it from somebody that's retired in that line of work. Don't label everybody the same. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Shannon.
No report.
No report, all right, Sarah?
Just one item, the parade of homes is scheduled to occur June 19th through the 28th. Fahy Fields will have some homes as part of that, so walking past them, they look great. Something to attend if you're interested, that's it.
All right, thank you, Julia.
So I want to mention something that people are complaining, or requesting, I would say, is, I know that we cannot do it, but there are a lot of people using the McKee Farm Park, and people are requesting if we can open the restroom, okay? Because they had to take the children to the first gas station that they found, or, you know. So I know that we need to follow the Dane County, and we need to open in our second phase, I don't know, but I will make a plea, even if, you know, it's, no, but I had to say it, if we can, you know, reconsider and see what we can do to accommodate this. The other thing that I want to mention is, maybe we need to reconsider when Phase 2 opens, is if we can open this bad splash, splash pad, because this summer is going to be very critical for a lot of family, especially for family with low income. They don't have a place where to take the children to a summer camp, because most of the summer camps are going to be all closed, or some of them, they're going to be open with limited capacity. Even this, I don't know, the school are going to have the after school, the program that they have in Leopold and those areas. So, I live two blocks away from the McKee Farm Park. The summertime is, you know, you can see people from all the backgrounds, diversity, and, you know, enjoying that splash pad. And then, I think that we need to reconsider if we can open this, because it's a lot of family that will need to, you know, to use, to use it. So, that one is going to be my plea again, if we reconsider that. I don't know in which phase we need to open this in, but we, we need to make, I don't know. Because I received some comments, and, you know, emails and calls about that. And also want to mention that, you know, I received a lot of email about what happened, regarding what happened in the last two weeks, about the police there. I received email asking about how our Pittsburgh police, you know, they do training, what type of training they receive, and Chief Brecklin was very, you know, generous to explain in very detail, what are the training that what are police officers, they, they go, they went, they go through. And also, as people representing the Latino community in Pittsburgh, I, you know, I, I will say that every time that we have an issue with ICE in the city of Pittsburgh, the police department here have been very accommodating and very supporting our community. So, I have a, you know, that one is something that I respect, and I am very proud that, that when this issue happened in our city, our police department is very considerate of some of the condition of our people. So, I want to mention, like Tom said, you know, no, everyone is, you know, we cannot blame. I also come from a family where, I come from police officers. My grandfather was the chief of police in my city, so I understand. But also, we need to, we need to look at what are the priorities that the police department should have in our city. So it's something that maybe, this is something that I want to bring forward, and I already talked to the chief. For the July committee of the whole, Chief Brecklin is going to come to our meeting and explain, we want to go through the police department budget, and he's going to, you know, talk about that, some of the other requests, that we can have this conversation. So, he's coming on July, so. So you have any question that you want to ask the chief for that meeting, send an email so he can be prepared for the presentation, okay? Thank you.
Pat, sorry, Gabrielle. Pat, do you know off the top of your head, is the next phase is when we open the bathrooms in the parks?
It, that's when it's scheduled, but they're going to reevaluate everything prior to opening each phase, so those individual items that are under each step will be reevaluated all at the same time.
Okay, so maybe by the end of the week, we'll be able to start opening bathrooms, possibly?
Potentially. Once the county makes a decision, we have to make an internal decision in terms of if they're ready and if we can staff them.
Okay, so hopefully soon. All right, Gabrielle?
So first, I attended the pride, pride flag raising with, on June 1st, and I shared it out in my e-newsletter, and I had a lot of city citizens say that they were very proud to see that, so I think we should all be very proud of that. Regarding voting, which I'll continue to talk about all the way through the elections, you know, we talked about this earlier, but I really encourage people to weigh in before the next council meeting about the resolution to consolidate the polling places. For people that are watching, the resolution is R-118-20, on page 43 of the agenda for June 9th, common council. So I would encourage you to read it, consider it, send feedback, and maybe even show up at the meeting and testify if you feel so moved. Joe, Aldridge Maldonado and I also wrote a letter to the editor that was published in the Wisconsin State Journal called "Act Now to Make Voting Safe in the Fall," and I think that really reflects where I stand on, on this issue as a whole. And I'm looking forward to finding out the final resolution for the WEC, which I think we'll talk about later. And then, lastly, and most importantly, I want to talk a little bit about the, what I consider the choice ahead of us as a council in regards to racial justice. Racism is a, is a problem that permeates through our country's policies and institutions, and Black Americans and other Americans of color face institutional oppressions. And white Americans like myself must acknowledge systemic racism, and how we benefit from unequal systems and white dominant culture, even if we don't hold personal racist beliefs. We have to actively choose to practice anti-racism, and if we don't, then we are complicit in that racist system. The murder of George Floyd, and so many other Black Americans at the hands of law enforcement, is an absolute tragic injustice, and it's just one of many horrific outcomes of systemic racism in our country. And I want to read a quote from the mayor's statement, quote, "The Pittsburgh City Council joins me in condemning the actions of individuals throughout the country against people of color, especially the African American community," unquote. And this quote for me, in, it misses the mark in a way, because racism in our country is not, obviously there is individual racism, but the, what the, what we're talking about now is not about individual action, it's about systems of oppression, the racism that permeates throughout our institutions. And I think we need to be very clear that city governments have been complicit in institutional racial oppression throughout history in a very significant way. So, we talk a lot about policing right now, but that also includes housing and zoning, environmental policy, transportation, employment, diversity and reputation on city committees and elected offices, and sometimes it's even a matter of some symbolic action. So, one thing we could have considered for this month, but wasn't brought up, you know, we could have declared Juneteenth an unofficial holiday in the, in the city of Pittsburgh, which is coming up on June 19th. And if you don't know what Juneteenth is, I would recommend that you Google it. So, but that's all to say that we have the power to make change in this way. And once again, I want to read from the mayor's statement, quote, "Fitzburg will be better, and we will lead the fight against systems of oppression," unquote. This is something that I strongly agree with, and it really leads me to a question that I have for the mayor, the council as a whole, city staff, citizens of Pittsburgh, what do we value? I ran for council because I want to make people's lives better, and I want to make sure Pittsburgh is a city for everyone. That's something that drives me, and that's what I'm thinking about when I create policy and decisions. And that includes addressing unequal and racist policies and practices that exist in Pittsburgh. And we can talk about things that go well, and I think we should acknowledge things that we do well, but it's, it's incumbent upon us to keep moving forward and not just pat ourselves on the back for one good move. I, and I want to ask all of you these, these questions for you to consider, rhetorical questions. Is racial justice a priority for you? Are we making people's lives better? Whose lives are we making better? And how will we build a budget and a policy that reflects that commitment? I'm, I'm really looking forward to the budget process in September, because that's going to be our opportunity to have that conversation about what we value, and how we reflect those values in our budget and our priorities, openly, transparently, in public view. And Mayor Richardson, I'm curious if what you said in your statement will be reflected in your initial budget proposal. I will be thinking on this, and I hope that all of us will continue thinking about this as we move forward. I encourage Pittsburgh citizens to pay attention to what's happening on council, continue to protest and make your voices heard, and I want to say that I am so grateful that those protests, protests and those voices have given me the opportunity to listen and take action, and I really take that to heart. Thank you. That's all for now.
All right, moving along, we did then finish business. So new business, you know, kind of every meeting, the elections update, as you know, we're going to be talking about consolidating polling places next meeting, and voting the week after that. But I know Tracy's got somewhat dated information with absentee ballots, and requests, and where the Elections Commission is at, so can you give us that, please?
Yep. So just to give you a little update, we've got some exciting news that was approved at the Wisconsin Elections Commission's May 27th meeting. They did approve CAREX, CARES Act funding for a subgrants fund, and this is for unbudgeted election costs for 2020. So we'll have to apply for the subgrant agreement, agreement and track changes, so that's exciting. They did approve for absentee voting, they are going to be providing mailings to registered voters that don't already have a request on file for the November election, and this will include information on the MyVote website, as well as a paper absentee ballot application with a prepaid return envelope. The Elections Commission is also going to be processing all those paper absentee applications, and this mailing is supposed to go out no later than September 1st. They also approved providing sanitation and PPE supplies for the August and November elections. And if anybody's ever absentee'd before, you'll notice on your envelope, there's a little barcode. So they're upgrading that barcode to help track the voters' absentee ballot requests, much like you track a package through UPS or FedEx or something like that, so. So that's exciting news. Also, we got some information from Dane County. They had a surplus of absentee envelopes left over from the April election, so they'll provide, they'll be providing municipalities with them for free. To keep everything even, I have an order for, even with other municipalities that are able to get some of these envelopes. So we have on order 7,500 inside envelopes and 1,500 outside envelopes. So I'll be picking those up this week from the county. We have about 6,000 in stock right now, that'll probably get us through August. We have about 6,000 in stock right now. That'll probably get us through August. Currently, we have about 4,003 requests on file just for the August election. But these envelopes will really help us out for November, so.
I think you told me there's 4,000 people that want a ballot, mail to them for the primary. And two years ago, we had 5,000 people total vote?
So in 2018, the August election, which was the governor's primary, we had just a little over 5,000 people participate, combined absentee and in person. And in 2016, which would have been the election similar to this one, we had a little over 3,000. So we've already surpassed that.
And then when City Hall opens up mornings in July, then there'll be another option for people to vote early.
Absolutely. We'll have in-person absentee voting available and curbside at City Hall and as well at the polling locations.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Questions for now? Yeah, Julia?
So when you talk about these WEC grants, how much money, do you know how much money?
So I don't know what it is divided by municipalities, but if you look on the report, it talks about
Is the same amount that Misty reported in finance, like 470? No, that one is for other stuff.
Is it $1 per voter or something?
Yeah, it's a $1.15, $1.15 per registered voter that does not already have a request on file for November.
Anything else before we move forward, Gabriella?
I'm curious about communication around how to submit your photo ID, because I didn't see that expressly laid out in the WEC information. I'm curious about if that's part of the mailing or if that's been part of the discussion, or if it's part of your plan to talk about it?
Sure, sure. It should be part of the mailing that they're going to provide because they said they would provide information on using the MyVote website, which is also submitting that photo ID if you don't already have one on file. I will say that anybody that has not moved out of the city of Pittsburgh since April, out of the 16,000 registered, plus registered voters, we have over 8,000 registered voters that have their photo ID on file already.
And for those 8,000 voters, that's people that have voted absentee at some point in the past, so they had to submit a digital version of it?
Correct. So your photo ID stays on file regardless, unless you move or change your name within the municipality or move to another municipality.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we will move along then to direct referrals. We've got a couple. Sarah, do you want to read the first one?
Yes, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-11220, authorizing award of contract for the Lacy Road MM intersection signalization.
Say about Julia, did Pub Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance? All right, they approved. All right, do you want to speak to this, Sarah?
Sure. So this is for the MM Lacy Road intersection, where the budget includes the funding for the signalization. This project in the resolution includes addition of turn lanes, median islands, pavement installation of signal infrastructure. Three bids were received. The low bid was Payne and Dolan, and that's what was recommended to move forward with.
And this is really important because that's where the school is going.
Yes, thank you. Good call. As Pat had mentioned earlier, the aim is to have this done before the school year. So possibly looking for September 2020 to have that as a completion prior to.
Julia?
Yeah, in finance, I don't know what you did in Public Works, but we we had a friendly amendment with the staff recommendation. Did you do that?
In Works, we made a friendly amendment because we did notice that the bid amount listed in the final paragraph didn't match. So we updated to make the amounts match, that that was the friendly amendment we made. I'm unsure. We did not have a staff recommendation.
What did you do in Finance, Julia?
We approved this resolution with a friendly amendment with the staff recommendation that is in the package.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So it's the recommendation, and that's what's
Yeah.
Okay. That shows it.
As soon as, yes.
Got it, yes.
Okay.
All right. Any questions on this here? I know the county is chipping in a lot of money for us. They're good partners on this one. All right, then we'll go ahead and all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. Watch you this one too, Sarah.
Sure. Make a motion to approve Resolution R-11320, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the city of Madison for traffic signal installation and maintenance.
Say by Randy, and did Pub Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve? All right, what's this one about, Sarah?
So this allows the city of Madison to purchase the equipment and installation for signals throughout the city. Madison receives bulk purchasing, and they provide the most efficient and lowest cost to install the traffic equipment.
So partner with them, they do all of our signals.
Correct.
Any questions or comments at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that is also approved. That is all the things on the agenda, so the next council meeting's in two weeks. And then we have a committee of the whole meeting in two weeks plus one day. And that's about all I have for tonight, so is there a motion to adjourn? All right, Shannon? Say by Gabriella, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, we are adjourned.